All right, calls may be in the order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, so the first thing we have on the agenda is CD Country Store, release of escrow. Resolution authorizing release of planning board escrows be resolved that the planning board of the town of Dover does hereby authorize that the following planning board escrow be returned to the applicants as set forth below. CD Country Store, application number PB 21-178, a remaining escrow of $292.70. This resolution is being offered by? Member Villano, seconded by?
Second.
Member Roman. Discussion. Appears to be done with this project, actually just drove by it, I could see the work's been done, so. I don't know if, no, I don't believe he's opened yet, but I'm not sure. Anything further to discuss? Is Mr. CD or representative here from CD Country Store? Usually not when we release escrows, figured to ask. Okay. All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of this resolution authorizing release of planning board escrows, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no. Resolution's thereupon adopted with five ayes and one absence. All right, moving on to LWF LLC Deer Pond.
Yes.
Would you like to come to the podium? I think there's representatives here from? Okay, so it's a request for extension. So if you'd like to come to the podium?
Okay.
Microphone needs to pick up your voice.
So I'm Jeff Rothschild.
Over there, over there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not, it's not court. It's not the prosecution defense. I'm not. More handsome than me.
So Jeff Rothschild? I'm representing LWF, and I'm here for Don Capellino, who's on vacation. So we're here to ask for an extension of our erosion control permit. We'd like to have one year, so that we don't have to come back within the interim. Anthony Colombo is here, along with the farmworkers Lindsay and Jordan.
Yes.
Who work at the onsite. I know Don submitted two letters with the enclosures, Ryan, that you, I think you're showing. Pretty much explaining everything. I really don't have that much more to add. It's pretty much self-explanatory.
Okay, there's also a letter from the D E C.
Yeah, so they, they did make a non-jurisdictional finding. It took, that's what was holding everything up, is my understanding, because of COVID, they were out of the office. I don't think we got approval until November.
Yeah, this, this is dated December 20th.
Yeah, December 20th, so.
Of 2021.
Right. And so that's what held, held everything up. And so that's why we're here to seek an extension.
Okay, I don't have any questions or comments for you at this time. Any member of the planning board have any questions, comments? None. Any of our consultants?
I do have, actually, I do have one question. Has the performance bond been posted? Yes? Okay.
As long as someone knows. All right, so, okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll go to this resolution, and then? Resolution granting one-year extension of erosion sediment control permit, LWF LLC ESC permit, whereas on May 17, 2021, the planning board granted the applicant LWF LLC an erosion sediment control permit to allow the construction of approximately 1.75 acre agricultural pond known as the project, located at 293 Dover Furnace Road, identified as tax parcel number 7061-11-094952, also known as the property. As shown on the sketch plans provided undercover letter from Donald Capellino Esquire dated March 24, 2021, with an undated revision submitted on April 20, 2021, also known as the approved plan, subject to several conditions of approval, including submission of a performance guarantee in the amount of $14,450. And whereas by letter from Donald Capellino Esquire dated February 7, 2022, the applicant has requested a one-year extension of time to complete the work authorized in the erosion sediment control permit, and whereas pursuant to section 65-8K of the code, the planning board may grant an extension of time to complete the work contemplated under erosion sediment control permit if, in its discretion, the planning board finds that such extension was warranted, and whereas permit renewals are type II actions under SECR, and whereas the planning board has considered the particular circumstances of the applicant which warrant an extension thereof, now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a one-year extension of time to May 16, 2023, to complete the work contemplated under the erosion sediment control permit as shown on the approved plan, subject to the following conditions, which must be satisfied within 45 days, or the approval will lapse without further action of the planning board. Payment of all fees and escrows, proof that the required performance guarantee of $14,450 will remain in full force and effect until at least May 16, 2023. Be it further resolved that before the authorized official may issue a certificate of compliance, the planning board engineer shall provide the authorized official with a written statement indicating that all work authorized under the permit has been completed in accordance with the approved permit. This resolution is being offered by? Member Leroy Bedir, seconded by? Member Roman. Discussion on the resolution? So I guess just one question, is, is it anticipated that the work should be completed within the next year, then?
Yes.
Now that the D E C is?
The only, and speaking to Anthony, the only thing that can hold up things is what's going on in the world. But otherwise, all things being equal, we should, we should be finished, hopefully sometime in November.
Right.
Yeah.
You're digging out a pond.
That's right.
Okay, I just, okay, yeah. All right. Yeah, I mean, if World War III starts, your pond's gonna be the least of our worries.
Yes.
Okay.
Or three.
Understood.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I get a copy of the, the resolution? Is it gonna be online?
Marilyn must do a copy.
Yeah, she'll send.
Online?
She'll send you a copy tomorrow.
Oh, I sent it, yeah.
Any further discussion, questions? Seeing no further questions or discussions, resolution granting one-year extension of erosion sediment control permit for LWF LLC ESC permit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no. Resolution thereupon adopted five zero with one absence. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Adam Secretary seems to have lost the folder that would have the minutes in it. Planning Board.
It should be on the desktop.
Oh, there we go, thank you.
Right there.
Yep. Thank you. All right, so? Just doing things a little out of order, just to try and get all the relatively quick things done upfront, so. All right, does anybody have any comments or questions for our secretary about the? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the February 7th minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no? Okay, that passes by a vote of five zero with one absence. All right, now onto old business, Harlem Valley Homestead.
Good evening, my name is Kathleen Gallagher with Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture PC. I'm joined by the applicant Josh Viertel of Harlem Valley Homestead and Alec Glad of Cuddy and Vader. Since the last time we were in front of the planning board, we took the updated master plan concept that we presented to you on February 7th and developed it further. The March 4 submission included an updated site plan drawing set that had updated utilities, including the water, wastewater, and storm water, as well as an updated erosion control set. We've included updating lighting plans by Goldstick Lighting Designs, and the plans are accompanied by a storm water pollution prevention plan. For the record, we've also updated, for the, for a hard copy for the record for the planning board, we've included the New York State Department of Transportation comments, as well as the subsequent submitted submission that addressed those comments. And just to continue, general updates of our communications with outside agencies, we did submit to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation this afternoon in response to their comments as well. I'd be happy to review the updated site plans if we want to jump to that set, and we can do a quick page turn through the utilities to talk about how the concepts have generally remained the same, but have been reconfigured in order to address the new layout. So if we want to start with drawing OP 1?
All right. OP 1?
Yeah. Excellent. We're just gonna zoom in a couple of these different areas as we go through the site plan set. To the east side of Old Forge Road is our farm core. The storm water within the farm core gets collected and conveyed to a cistern that is located south of the farm core between the homestead house and the pond. There is also a couple of the river cabins located on the west side that also breaks at a high point that gets conveyed into the cistern. On the western side, we had underground infiltration systems, which will continue to progress with that management of storm water treatment. Those were in this general area, which we'll point out to you on the actual utility plan. In addition to the east of this, we have added a curb cut into Old Forge Road. That area has been further developed, and we've included a storm water management practice and underground infiltration system in that area as well to address the updated developed areas. If we want to start with SP 2.1? Again, water, wastewater, right, there's a lot of, I see Ryan Jacob said, there's a? A lot of utilities that are happening and going around in this area. Again, you'll see they're providing the three utility services to each one of the buildings. If we, all that hatched area is the parking lot and things like that, that are being conveyed into the catch basins and drain outlets throughout the property. If we go to the next sheet, we'll be able to see the cistern.
Yeah, I think it's just when you look at it from this zoom.
Understood, understood.
Okay. Next page?
Yes. We can see that the two gray hatched oval items? Are our cistern. They are in the same location that they were shown on the previous drawings. We also have a pump station, because as we gravity feed all of the wastewater into the pump station, we have to pump it up to the septic systems. Again, those two items were the same practices we were using on our last plans. We've updated the piping, the catch basin, things of that nature, in order to be able to show how it is aligned with the new layout, but our concepts continue to remain the same.
And just to be clear, their cisterns are underground?
Correct.
No, people aren't gonna see this, okay.
Correct.
And all the piping goes into one, and this second one is just connected underground to the first one?
Correct. Exactly. If we want to go on to our next sheet? Nothing too much exciting here, we can flip through some of these, but the river cabins are collected with roof drains. As we've mentioned in previous submissions, the roof drains are collecting the roof so that none of that storm water is being conveyed down the hill directly into the 10 mile. Everything is being conveyed into a swale or a portion of the system, so it's being collected onsite and treated. If we want to go to our next sheet? You'll see the underground infiltration systems that are kind of this cross-hatched kind of checkered striping that you see on either side of the intersection of River Road and Saddle Road on either side, and you'll see a third treatment practice over on the left side of the sheet.
Saying here? Here?
Correct.
Okay, and then this one?
And again, those items are collecting the roofs from each of the cabins, also collecting storm water from the road that goes into a swale, and we gravity feed it into these different areas. If we want to go to our next sheet? This is where the hive is. You can see, again, we talked about this area is developed in a different way than it previously was. To be able to account for that, we had to add an underground infiltration system in this area as well, and you can see that at the top of the page.
Okay, so this is further up on Dover Furnace Road? The road is here?
Correct.
Okay. And then this is that new turnoff you're creating?
Exactly.
Okay. And this, this is what you're calling the hive?
Yes.
Thank you. Next page?
Sure. Again, this is just a little further up than what we were talking about before. You can see that infiltration system where the curb bends, that again is collecting the storm water for the structures in this area, as well as a portion of the hive.
Purpose of, for the curve in the road is just because of the grade of the hill?
Yes.
Just to lengthen it out?
To make this an emergency access. The fire code has a maximum slope of 10%, so to able to give us the ability to make the elevation change, we had to add some length, and the best way to do that is to, to make that curve. And then if we go to the next sheet, we can start to see the storm water fields. These are in the exact same locations that they were before. We did not adjust that based on the updated layout. If anything, our numbers were actually reduced from the updated sheets, and therefore we didn't need to adjust, expand the fields at all. And I believe there's one more sheet, again, showing that last septic area.
Here, okay.
That really concludes the majority of the technical review, as this was really focused on utilities for this round, as well as some of the lighting. Again, we've included the updated storm water pollution prevention plan, which have been submitted, and as we continue with the process, we'll continue to revise it based on comments from both the board and the consultants. And I'm happy to take any questions from either at that time.
Okay, let's see. You also submitted?
This is the latest comments from the DOT. And you'll see in our submission back, there was a question about a potential sign for animal crossing, and we did bring that to their attention, for them to review the possibility of having that within the area.
Right, okay. This was just the cover letter? This is the lighting?
Correct. Similar fixtures to what we showed before, similar levels of lighting is what we showed before, but again, updated based on the locations of the pathways and the building locations.
The, the rectangles here are solar panels over the parking areas?
If you remember, in one of the earlier renderings, there is a cantilever structure that has solar panels on top. That is what it's, that is representing.
Okay. Alright, and then...
We've included the updated intersection drawings from New York State, the Route 55 and Old Forge Road. Again, this was submitted to the DOT for their review.
Okay. And what, has anything substantially changed here?
The same concept has remained the same, just refining some of the details. We also wanted to update the drawings. There are updated threatened endangered species notes on the drawings for us to be able to include that to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Just because we are off-site doesn't mean that we do not need to follow the threatened endangered species mitigation, and we're working closely with the DEC to make sure that we're providing all the necessary mitigation for that work.
Okay. And has the highway superintendent seen the, has there been any communication with the highway superintendent with the...
Not directly related to this, but we can send the most latest plans.
Okay. And then the SWIP, and then this last one? This last one is just a response to comments?
Correct.
Okay. Alright. Okay, so we did receive a letter from the highway superintendent, and I know you've received that as well. I'm not gonna go through all of it, there's, you know, quite a bit here, but the bottom line is that the, you know, the highway superintendent and along with the town engineer, you know, and their professional opinions feel that, you know, quite a bit of work would need to be done on the road, given what you're proposing. So just wanted to see if you had any thoughts, comments on the letter?
It's a lot of information which we are digesting. Our traffic engineers are reviewing it. One request that they did make was just a little more understanding of the potential aesthetics of the product that's being proposed, and if there was anywhere in town that we could look at the material so that we can get an idea of what the look and the feel of the road is gonna be.
Okay. You're talking about the oil and chip?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know it's used a lot around town, so if he's amenable and if the planning board doesn't object, the highway superintendent is here, he can come up and just discuss it if you like. If you want, it's up to you.
No, we can...
Give the memo and...
We can email that we received, and we can discuss that.
Okay.
And we're happy, we know we have an upcoming, hopefully an upcoming meeting with the team and the town to discuss kind of the general road issues. We did request that we just add this as an agenda item so that we continue to discuss this further. I do believe that Neil Alexander has sent a couple emails in relationship to that meeting in February, maybe some follow-up emails too. I don't know if he overstated his, you know, welcome a little bit with the follow-up emails, but hopefully with this, I understand that we were waiting to schedule until we got some more information, and hopefully we'll be able to...
Your attorney's looking to speak with the town attorney and then also have some other people involved, including
Correct.
The highway superintendent, myself, the engineer, okay.
Absolutely, and I think April, we are open and welcome to scheduling that, and I do anticipate it probably taking more than one meeting, so that gives us, makes us wanna get a date on the books in order for us to be able to allow this to progress.
Respond to the sub information. What the highway superintendent has requested and what I recommend is what we've been using throughout the town.
Right.
It's not something new.
No.
We can certainly share with the applicant the most recent paving that's been done last year, but the paving's going back forever, as long as I've been around, this type of paving. Most of our roads are this motor paved type paving. It's not pure asphalt, it doesn't look like asphalt, but we can certainly share.
Right.
But look, all they need to do really is drive around the town.
Yeah, it's kind of a different name, motor paved, chip and seal, oil and stone, yeah, I hear, yeah.
It's similar words for same process.
And it's just on that, the existing asphalt on the hillside needs to be asphalt just because of the grade.
Motor paved is only good for up to certain slope, above a certain slope, five, six percent and steeper, you have to go to blacktop because of the rigidity of the blacktop. So you do see blacktop surfaces in Dover, but those are typically on either highly paved roads.
Highly traveled, highly traveled roads?
Yeah, or on the steep routes. Roads are steep. But the roads are normal, it's less than 5% with lower traffic. Typically, we use a motor pave because it's a more rural character, but it's less expensive.
Sure, right.
Simple as that.
It also has a better feel to the road.
Yeah.
It has a polymer oil mixed with it.
Right.
So it gives with the road. Right now, we're in a frost period where everything heaves and stuff, so anything that goes on with that, it's gonna heave with it and go with it, where if you use hot asphalt, it's gonna crack at that point.
Right.
To us, it's a better, more safety
Yeah.
issue than anything with it.
Yeah, also they have...
It's a great product, and I can show you in town where we just did it last year and the year before.
Yeah, also they get more grip, like the way the...
It's exactly the same as blacktop, the same stone is used, it's just a polymer oil.
Instead of the asphalt which cures.
It goes down four to five inches or three inches, whatever it might be at the time, but it has really good flexibility for your road. It's not made for a 22 where there's gonna be 10,000 cars a day going over it, it's made for your road. That's what we've been trying to use as we've been going along, moving forward with our roads in those situations, just to make it a better product.
And some of this is obviously our own interest, but obviously, we're in communication with neighbors, and there's also some questions as well as that, so we just want to be able to communicate them, the information that's being told to us, and also give them, you know, an idea of specific places where they can go to look at that, that's a good representation of what's being requested.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have. Let's go through the members. Member Roman, any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Member Valano?
Not at this time.
Member Leroy Bedir?
Uh, no, thank you.
Member Williams?
No comment.
Okay. And then to our consultants. Was this printer always here blocking the web?
No.
Maybe the table moved. Paul Dar?
I have no comments.
Okay. Engineer Berger?
How much for me this time? The memo is long, but it's really just, you know, rehashing what they responded to.
Right.
There's still a lot of information that they're gonna submit. The architectural drawings are coming in. They're gonna go, give those to SHPO also for another look. They're gonna revise the visual assessment to include, I think, two more views into the cabin area from Old Forge as requested. They just got back to DEC today, threatened endangered species issues, so I have to look through that response, but, you know, hopefully there's some progress with DEC on that. As far as, you know, unless she has more comments, we'll see. But yeah, I think we need that information still for, you know, we set a hearing. We need the EAF Part 3 to be all up to date, so the public can digest it. And obviously, the big ticket item for today was the highway super's letter, so AKRF's available to join that meeting when it's ready to happen. I think some folks from our traffic group would be interested in attending that, so just let us know.
Okay. And then actually, just one more thing, just looking at this reminded me that, so something has changed here on the set plan. It was about the location of the boundary line for the road. Has that been, have you rectified that?
Yes.
Because it, like I said at the last meeting, it looked like the boundary line is this line.
Correct.
And then, so it looked like you were, that this, this property didn't belong to this owner, not yourselves?
Correct.
So what's the, what are you saying it is now?
You can see that we've added that property line.
Okay. But I mean, is that the property line, or you just added a...
It's the property line.
Oh, okay. And what's this other line?
We had our survey, they're both a property line. So they're on either side of Old Forge Road. So you can see that Old Forge Road goes down the center between those two property lines. What was missing before was to the east, we did not include the Priest property line on our drawings.
Okay.
We did go back to our survey team, they were able to give us that so we could accurately represent it on the drawings.
So who owns, who owns Old Forge Road from here down?
It's between, but it is, I believe this is part of the whole conversation that we are having
Okay.
related to Old Forge Road is the area in between two properties.
Right. So you're saying that no one owns it, like that it's a...
I'm not gonna say nobody owns it.
Okay.
I'm gonna say that's an item that people have opinions on, on who owns it and what type of road it is, but it's town.
I guess I was hoping there'd be clarification, and now I feel like there's less clarification.
It's a user road. We believe it's the same as Old Forge Road within those other areas along the property.
There's no clear title to it, to the town, nor is there clear title to anyone else.
Okay.
So the town only obtains title through users.
Right, I know like in Dutch's parcel access, there's like, sometimes if you try to click on a road, nothing happens because no one actually owns it.
Yeah, because it's...
Because it's the, everybody owns it, I guess, or the town, the government owns it, but, so, I mean, so just to be clear, you do own the road?
Correct.
In the center part of your project?
You can see at that area where you're looking at, that there's like an east-west line. That is where the end of the current 100-acre parcel, which is the, the middle parcel, yeah. That's the location, everything south of that to the next property line is within the Old Forge Road, is within the Harlem Valley Homestead property. Anything north of that goes back to the town user road discussion, which is on the agenda for, for our meeting.
Property of Harlem Valley, you can track that when it became a user road. Properties outside of Harlem Valley cannot be tracked back with the title search, they go back as far as they go back.
Okay.
There's still no title to an actual person, or company, or whatever entity. So...
Okay.
Again, one of those, I'll defer to the attorney on this one. Just a little history for the planning board members. Back
Yeah.
Back in the 70s and 80s, specifically 80s when I started practicing, user roads were becoming more and more identified by court cases and things, and the resulting practice at that time was every boundary survey that went along a road, the surveyors would include in the survey a statement of all rights, title, and interest to the center on a road that may or may not exist. Somewhere around the 90s, the court changed with more challenges, and those statements seemed to disappear in further deed changes.
Oh.
So this is one of the situations where property changed hands over and over again, and it happened even before 70 when those properties changed hands, and the surveyors started following what they thought was the current practice in the 70s of 25 feet from center line, which has since then been challenged.
Gotcha.
And surveys, you would buy land 25 feet from center line, and deed was created without accepting back or acknowledging to the center that was a user road. There's been a lot of court conflict on that ever since, and it's caused these kind of problems in rural roads. And you go into the towns like Poughkeepsie, High Park, most of the roads were subsequently deemed to, the towns are actually fitted, but rural towns like Aminia, Pauling, and Dover have this situation. This is not unique to this project.
Right.
It's something that's in all rural roads, and it hasn't been resolved and probably won't be resolved because every five to 10 years, it seems, another court case comes up to the court and another ruling comes a different way.
Gotcha.
Yeah. This is obviously a complicated issue.
Yeah.
And so it is one of the things we do want to get resolved though, before we open up a public hearing. So that's why we do anticipate this being potentially more than one meeting.
Right.
The importance of that is it allows us to get to the public hearing phase, because we believe that the full scope of Old Forge Road is something that is gonna be interest to the public, and we'd like to be able to fully disclose where we all landed on the, on the issue.
Okay. Alright, so where we stand at this time is that you're, you have, we're gonna have a meeting, but are you intending any further submissions?
We, again, we would like to be working towards the public hearing, and so we really have the road issue resolved. We don't believe that it's advantageous to move forward with that. In the meantime, we'll continue to work on the architectural drawings and prepare our submission to SHPO.
Okay. So I guess you'll be on the subsequent agenda following our meeting?
At the moment, I don't have an anticipated submission date, but we'll, we'll keep everybody apprised of, of our progress.
Okay. Anyone have anything further? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, our next meeting is April 4th, followed by April 18th, and then May 2nd. Is there any further business before the planning board at this time? Okay, seeing no further, oh, well, the deadline was March 18th, so what do we receive, Wingdale Solar?
Wingdale Solar.
Okay. And then are we, is that, that would, is that the only thing we have then for the next meeting? I think so.
Transco back? That's all we see.
Transco didn't submit?
No.
No. It might just be Wingdale Solar, okay. Alright, alright, so that's for April 4th. Alright, seeing no further business for the planning board, I'll make a motion to adjourn, seconded by
Second.
Member Valano? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.